All right, it is six P M. We will call the Sartell City Council meeting for Monday, September twenty fifth to order. Please rise for pledge of allegiance. All right, next item on our agenda is the Agenda Review and Adoption. Would look for a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Have a motion to approve, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto open forum, public comment. We have two registered tonight. First up, we have Maggie Kramer. If you wouldn't mind stepping to the podium and state your name, address for the record.
Hi, I'm Maggie Kramer. I live at eight two eight First Street North on the Crick with my husband Gary. I'm here tonight as a member of the Sartell Historical Society, encouraging you to attend a trio of events that the Sartell Historical Society is hosting this week. The first one will be the Sartell Middle School sixth graders coming to the community center as part of their social studies curriculum. They will rotate through several twenty minute sessions where members of the historical society will introduce them to objects, events, locations, and people. This year, we're hosting a follow-up activity, in particular for parents who, when they ask their child the age-old question, "What did you learn at school today?", and the kid goes, "Hmm", well, maybe they'll say, "Well, you know, they showed us this great big grabber thing, and the McCanns used it to harvest ice." Now, maybe you, as a parent, are intrigued on what is your kid talking about? We'll come to this very casual question and answer session that we'll talk about what we told the kids on Thursday and Friday. It's for all community members, not just the parents of sixth graders. For longtime residents, it could be a trip down memory lane. For newcomers, it's an opportunity to learn more about the community that you've decided to call home. The second event this week hosted by the Sartell Historical Society is the Paper Mill Reunion. This will be the second year that we've done this. It's an opportunity for coworkers to reconnect, to share memories, excuse me, to share stories and create new memories, and that will start at noon on Saturday at the community center. The third event, huh huh, is a community-wide bingo. Sometimes I get ideas that I wish I didn't get, but we're going to play bingo, not with numbers, but with locations. We've come up with forty-four locations around town, and they will be randomly placed on bingo cards. You can pick up your bingo cards here at City Hall, the community center, or at Naughty Paws. You'll look at the bingo card and say, "I'm interested in this row. I'm interested in this diagonal line." You then go to the sites listed in that line and take a picture of yourself at the location, selfie with the item in the background. Yes, everyone is going to be able... Am I done? Oh, okay. I'm done.
More information?
For more information, check Dennis Dolman's article on September fifteenth. And the bingo cards will be available on Thursday here, Community Center, and Naughty Paws.
Awesome. Thank you, Maggie.
That was quick.
Next up, Peter Wilson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Peter Wilson. I live at eleven zero eight Celebration Drive. Want to talk about, I started to talk about it last time, but there was some things pending on it. The daycare, let's use the words daycare debacle. You don't have any interest. You should not be involved in this. If it has ended, it should never begin again. There should be apologies issued for having brought it up and voted on it. I recommend you go to every residence in Sartell and give those. This is a long-term bad idea. It doesn't belong here. If the community is affected negatively by inflation, by government control, by other things, you should not add to it. Well, no matter how it starts, no matter how it begins, it will only grow, because some other group will say, "Maybe we need to add more. We need to do something different. It needs to be additional." The old saying that has been around for a while, "Take the village or raise the child", that has a communist concept, the idea of destroying families and then having other government entities manipulate and manage them. It needs to end, and again, the apologies need to be given. The other one thing I want to bring about, and I'm going to be approaching this on an ongoing basis, is sustainability goals. These didn't fall out of the air. Some pigeon didn't drive by and/or fly over and drop it. This is the United Nations intent to change culture in the nation and reduce population. The idea being constraining people to limited areas, giving them little tidbits like a drug dealer gives an individual who they want to sell drugs to. This is a whole intent. You can look into it, look into why things come about from my left to my right in front of me. It isn't hard to find these things. In fact, the lady that was here working on the paper mill stuff, if we use that word, I had spoken with her before with another person with me. She was familiar with it. So it's what's called Agenda Twenty-One, the Agenda for the Twenty-First Century. The globalist, insidious, anti-constitutional mayor of St. Cloud, and you're welcome to inform him. I said that. He was one of the big promoters of that, and you can see on his website where that's at. This includes such things as green steps, welcoming cities, all of this. And lastly, I want to close up with the golf course thing. I cannot believe all that went on. I've seen things different than that, but similar in consequence. If it wasn't desired, just, you should have sold it. Now it'll just be a gradual degradation of quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, next on our agenda, we have approval of city council minutes from September eleventh, regular meeting and special meeting. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto consent agenda. We have items A through J. Would take a motion?
I'd like to pull B as in boy and E as in Edward.
B as in boy, E as in Edward. Are there any others? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve A through J with the exception of B and E.
I would move to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry. First, on to item B.
Just a point of clarification. The customer engagement policy indicates, or the background memo reads, "No public-facing buildings will be closed for weather-related conditions going forward." I just thought it might be worth clarifying that that would be at the administrator's discretion in the notes.
Yeah, I think the, um, the policy does word it that it, I mean, basically, no weather conditions would allow it to be, whatever, allow it to be closed. So we could, I could definitely add that line at the end of it if that would be what council would want, that at the, at the administrator's discretion, up to you guys.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean...
Yeah. I, right now, I, it, it does not give any discretion, just based on our conversations at workshops, so whatever you guys would want to do.
Seeing a consensus on it. Just point of clarification on that, the discussion from workshop was, I think the initial proposal was to follow school.
Yep, that's removed.
And the discussion at workshop was, no, we don't want to follow school. There's points in times where we might have a different call based off of knowing our plow routes and schedules that we would make our own determination. Is that representative of discussion?
Correct.
Okay. Seeing a consensus, I'll look for a motion. If you want to make a motion on item B?
I'll make a motion to approve with adding the administrator's discretion to that decision.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item B carries with amendment. Onto item E.
Um, with regards to the customer, community engagement platform, just a couple of questions. If we transition to another vendor in the future, would we be able to bring that data with us? And I don't know if that's directed to Anna or Rob. Do you want to take that?
Yeah, I reached out to Polco this morning in anticipation of this question, and they said, yes, our data would be transferable, that we would be able to retain that data if we were to move vendors or not do the national survey anymore.
Okay, and then are the questions configurable, meaning we as a city council could come up with things that might be unique to us to include in this survey?
Yeah, that was one thing that we appreciated the most about, about this N C S survey is that you can add custom questions. They have a bank of questions that are same for anybody that takes a survey so they can benchmark communities, so those stay the same, but you can add custom questions for communities beyond that initial benchmarking group of questions. So if, I think the example on your packet is Hutchinson. They, you can tell that there's a couple of questions on it that they specifically asked around their budget or infrastructure projects that were specific to Hutchinson and not something that you'd easily benchmark across the nation. So it does have the capabilities to add those custom questions.
Okay, great. And then, last question. Is there any component of the survey that can be directed specifically to businesses so we could gather data for economic development purposes?
Yeah, we, um, two pieces of it. I'll let you speak to the economic development platform module piece of it, but we, we get to set the mailing list, so if we wanted to, we could have a, you know, resident group and a business group and send them out separately to be, just to be able to keep that data easily tracked from each different audience. But it also does include two additional modules. One, that's specific to economic development that we can use specifically for businesses and tracking business benchmarking. Do you want to add anything to that, or is that, I mean?
No, you covered it.
It's, yeah, it's, it's an additional item that they provide data analytics for us, for the economic development business side.
Great, and that's included with?
Yeah, that would be included in, in this proposal.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would, unless anybody else has questions? I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion on item E for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item E carries. We have three public hearings tonight. First one is Title X zoning ordinance.
Mayor and members of the council, before you is the modif, proposed modification to Title X zoning ordinance regarding stockpiles. I'll just briefly go through an overview of where we are at today. As we are aware, there's a current moratorium in place. This was passed on October twenty fourth of, sorry, it should expire on October twenty fourth of twenty twenty-three. We did have that for one year, which is the, that is the longest that you can have a moratorium in place. May first, Planning Commission reviewed and approved the initial drafted stockpile ordinance. We did bring that to, in front of council on May twenty-second of this year. Council direction was to obtain input from a specific developer regarding their primary concerns with the drafted ordinance at that time. Then we had a discussion at the previous council workshop on September eleventh. Some of those discussion topics were tie, tying the stockpiles into development agreements, resulting in retaining the letter of credit that we require for those developments, allowing developers and/or landowners to actively work stockpiles with the issuance of a land disturbance permit, with the requirement of no additional material being added. And then also allowing the screening of materials to help facilitate the eventual removal of stockpiles within the city. And then we also had discussions allowing land disturbance permits to remain open for up to one year, so we wouldn't require them to constantly obtain a land disturbance permit administratively. That would be beneficial for us as well. We also talked about meeting the MS four requirements for erosion and sediment controls. And then we also ended our discussion, knowing that the drafted ordinance was the most restrictive and that we'd be open to making some modifications to make it less restrictive if needed. I did make some slight revisions to the ordinance that was presented to you at workshop. I'll go through those in a second here. Some of our public, public engagement strategies that we used, we sent letters initially before the moratorium was in place to the affected property owners and developers in the city as well as in Leesock Township. So that was sent prior to the moratorium where, where the public hearing was held in twenty twenty-two. Then I sent letters out again to the same group on May first, prior to the public hearing at a council level. On May twenty-second, I attended various C N B A meetings in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three discussing the proposed ordinance amendment. There was overall support from the C N B A group, the entire group, as well as their staff for this ordinance, and they did acknowledge that there is an issue at hand and, and potentially figuring out how to, how to encourage removal of those stockpiles. And then I also had discussions with Steve Gottwalt with the C N B A of how do we get developers involved in this conversation to get positive feedback as well? And he did reach out to other developers to get them to engage in conversation with him. Ultimately, those developers outside of the group did not respond back to him on that. We did hold a public hearing on May twenty-second. And then the council directed staff to speak with a specific developer. I did meet with them on June seventh of this year. I did email the developer previous to the workshop agenda item on September eleventh, and that developer did not attend. And then direction from council at the workshop was to post for another public hearing, which I did, and that public hearing is right now, obviously. Some of the modifications to the stockpile ordinance were in A. In the number one there, it did say no additional materials and/or allowing them to be actively worked. I did just change that language, that just saying no additional materials may be added to existing stockpiles. And then in number two there, with the approval and issuance of a land disturbance permit, we may require the applicant to supply a letter of credit in amount determined by the city, leaving this up to our development team to determine if a letter of credit would be required just due to the fact that sometimes land disturbance permits are pulled for smaller-scale projects, not actively working stockpiles, so leaving that to the discretion of our development team. And then in B, adding number three there, just calling out that letter of credits may be not, may not be released until stockpiles are removed from the defined area on site. So that was the additions made. C and D of the ordinance, and it's in front of each of you, did not have any modifications. With that, there's a lot of information. I would like to open it up for the public hearing portion of this and then get back to any questions that you may have.
Council, we will open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the stockpile ordinance, please step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to testify on Title X zoning ordinance, please step forward. Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify. We will close the public hearing. Council, what questions do we have?
When you say that you may require an applicant to provide a letter of credit with existing stockpiles, like, could you walk us through a little bit of how, what would go into a decision like that, or how you might deter, to determine that?
Yeah, good question. So John and I actually spoke about this previously to the meeting tonight. So our development team would look at the application and look at the entire scope of the project and look at the timelines of what's being proposed. If this is a relatively shorter project and the scope's relatively small, we may not require it, but prior to the, we would determine a, an amount that is fair for all to ensure that they would meet the intent of this ordinance, but it would be a decision that we'd handle internally with our development team, which consists of Public Works, community development, and then also our permitting and engineering team as well.
Maybe a quick follow-up to that. Talk about the amount. Is our intent, the letter of credit would cover the amount to remove the entire stockpile, or is it more guided towards the work or the sculpt being done under that permit?
Good question. Yes, it would, it would be tied to the scope of the work on that specific permit. Depending on the size of the stockpile, over time, over a few years, whatever that may look like, it may be a few land disturbance permits just because of the scope and the timing. But I did want to just make sure I touch on this point that you will see land disturbance permits have a specific stockpile application with a specific fee for that that I will have included on our revisions for the fee schedule this next year.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Carrie, can you clarify? You said we're obviously coming to the end of the current moratorium. We can't do another moratorium on stockpiles. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, once this expires, once the moratorium would expire, and if we didn't have an approved ordinance, it would revert back to what is currently in place, which is nothing. So it would just be current status quo of that. So we wouldn't be able to extend it anymore, have another one specific to stockpiles.
Got it. Thank you.
Council, I would say that this has been something that has been grappled with by multiple different councils, multiple different staff members, planning commissions. I think it was part of the planning commission back when Anna and I served on that together. The intent is to lower the hills of Sartell, if you will. But we also, and I, I know this council really understands the cost, that we can't just simply go have them move tomorrow. And that there's an element of city zoning regulations versus a township zoning regulation, and that the general public may not know the difference or see the difference. So I think this gets us to the intent of drawing them down, allowing them to be worked in a fashion that they could resell the product, but not be added to. And I know we've had a lot of discussion. It feels like we've struck a pretty fair, balanced ordinance here that may just need to be tweaked over time as we learn more, but I guess I have high confidence that we've finally gotten to a point of having a stockpile ordinance in place. I'll make a motion to approve. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto Title Three, Business and License Regulations.
My final ordinance amendment in front of you this evening is regarding the sale of cannabinoid products. I'll just go through, again, an overview of how we got to where we are currently. New state law enacted in, at the end of twenty twenty-two allowed for certain edible products infused with THC to be sold. And just a little snippet, Brandon, jump in at any time if you feel like you need to. Then new law enacted in the twenty twenty-three legislative session legalizing adult-use cannabis and establishing a regu, regulatory framework for that. And I do just want to call out that there is a difference between the edible THC products and the actual cannabis, meaning the THC is a lower potency product that is able to be sold. And then council approved a cannabis moratorium through January first of twenty twenty-five just to ensure that we are on the same wavelength as a state with regulating and licensing those. Part of the ex, part of that or moratorium for cannabis was the exception of the lawful sale of cannabis. was the exception of the lawful sale of cannabinoid products, which is what's in front of you this evening. Um, all licensing will be enforced by the Office of Cannabis Management until that is established. Um, the current regulatory force is the Department of Health. All establishments that sell these products must register with the state of Minnesota. This application is online and there's no fee to apply. Um, for that. This eh, within the statute which is in front of you, um, one five one point seven two defines scope, products, testing, labeling, um, all of those items within there as well. And then once we get to the revenues of the retail sales, it'll be divided between the general fund and local government aid account. And then we spoke about this at our September eleventh special workshop. Um, which came from direction to amend our chapter sixteen cannabinoid ordinance to allow on and off sale of cannabinoid beverages. As well as allowing the state of Minnesota to handle the licensing of that. Some definitions included, um, and it's pretty important to establish that there are differences within our definitions just to meet the intent um, that council discussed that evening. So cannabinoid product is beverages and the other products. Um, edible cannabinoid product um, defined there contains um, is contains a cannabinoid in connection with food ingredients and is not drug. This term does not include cannabinoid beverages for the sake of our ordinance. Um, and then specifically cannabinoid beverages. Including um, obviously the beverage side of that. We define that separately just because we wanted to ensure that for setbacks with on and off sale. And um, tobacco shops, we wanted to make sure that there is a line drawn there. Um, until the OCM issues licenses, the onsite consumption is limited to those businesses with an on-sale liquor license, and that is some, a state requirement. Off-sale exclusive liquor stores can sell edible cannab- cannabinoid product, products, subject to licensing with the Department of Health and the Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management once that's established. Within the state legislature, um, cities can impose regulations, which we currently have with our tobacco shops. So where can cannabinoid products be sold within the city of Sartell? The only permissible locations are tobacco shops and licensed liquor establishments. So tobacco shops can sell the edible cannabinoid product that doesn't include beverages. Um, this is currently allowed within our ordinance, so there would be no modification to that. Um, and then licensed liquor establishments on and off sale could sell cannabinoid beverages. So licensed liquor establishments, something that's specific there, they do not have to meet the setback requirements that we call out for the tobacco shops. And they must have an on-sale liquor license to sell on-sale cannabinoid products. Like I stated earlier, this is a state of Minnesota requirement at this time. Tobacco shops um, is the only permissible retail establishment that can sell these products. The edible cannabinoid products. The setbacks that we have currently in place is a thousand feet from a youth-oriented facility. And then two thousand feet from any other retail establishment selling these products. Um, state license is required, like I say, stated earlier, they will have to um, apply online with the Department of Health in the OCM later. The, when they do this application, they reach out to the local authority and make sure that they are able to sell those products um, and have the licenses that are required. They, that's a checkbox that they need to fill out before they can issue that license. Um, we would continue to issue tobacco and liquor licenses as we currently do. And we would relinquish the actual cannabinoid licensing back to the state. And I know Jill, you did have one question regarding the hours that you would be able to sell these products. And like I stated, there is a difference between liquor establishment, liquor establishments and um, the retail establishments. The retail establishments would have to meet those setbacks and they'd have to meet the hours of operation where they couldn't sell. I think it's between ten PM and eight AM in the ordinance, so they would have to meet that. However, the licensed liquor establishments wouldn't have to meet those hours of sale.
Thank you.
Um, with that, I would do the same thing as previously, just open up the public hearing and then get to your questions that you may have.
Council, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on Title three, business and licensing regulations, please step forward. Anyone wishing to testify on Title three, business and license regulations? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify? Close the public hearing. Uh, council, what questions do we have on the cannabinoid? Uh, can you talk me through a little bit? This has been an evolution. I think we talked about that at our workshop. Um, right now, we have restrictions on the tobacco shops. They can't be within a thousand feet from a youth-oriented facility. And we're looking to keep that. But for on-sale, off-sale, it could be anywhere is what we're proposed.
Yeah, uh, for the on-sale, off, on-off sale of the beverages themselves, we wouldn't have those setback requirements just due to the fact that we're bars, restaurants that would be able to sell these products. By the time you put in those setbacks, most of them won't be able to operate. Um. So where you would be able to have a bar and restaurant in your specific zoning district um, would be where you could sell the beverages themselves.
Essentially regulate it or zone it out, right? And a off-sale, which is a liquor store cannot sell an edible, but they can sell, they can only sell a beverage, not an edible?
Correct, yeah. Where, the thought process behind it, and Anna, you can jump in if you want, and with our attorney, we wanted to keep the beverages where you can go and get beverages, alcoholic beverages in that in that, and then have those tobacco shops have the actual cannabinoid products, gummies, whatever that entails, but not be allowed to do both, if that makes sense.
Yeah, d- definitely makes, uh, um, understand the logic on it, I council, I maybe struggle with that one a little bit. Feels like we're opening up one end of the spectrum. But then we have maybe too tight of constraints, in my opinion, on the tobacco side that and I don't want to zone it out, but I wonder if I can go to a liquor store today and buy a uh, intoxicating liquor and a cigar at the counter. But in this case, I would, in the future, I'd be able to buy a cannabinoid beverage. But if I wanted a consumable, I'd have to go to a different spot. I, I I understand this is an evolution. I think we're getting close. I maybe would encourage us to talk through this a little bit more of how we structure that. But I don't want to get into too much discussion. I guess I'll pause for any other questions.
Just point of clarification, so you're, you're questioning the ability for liquor stores to sell edibles?
Yeah.
As part of this.
Yeah, what I wanted to understand was how we arrived at, at some of these recommendations of hey, a tobacco store can do this only, a liquor s- uh, off-sale can do this only. I think the on-sale is, is pretty understandable. Yeah. Does that make sense?
Mayor, I'll, I'll jump in quick and if I recall correctly, um, what we're struggling with is our current ordinance on the consumable retail side of it. We have strict requirements around the setbacks from youth facilities and, and daycares and things of that nature. And obviously, when you move over to the on-sale, off-sale side, we would, you'd basically have to wipe that restriction out because it'd be too difficult to enforce. So then we went down the path of just splitting the two separately and saying, okay, the tobacco shop can still stay under that enforcement. Um, and then the liquor, if I'm recalling correctly, am I stating that right?
Yeah, and part of that was just from previous direction of, we are in a similar position in twenty twenty two when new laws were passed that, hold on, we don't know exactly what we need here, but let's, it's very fluid and let's work with that and I I ultimately do believe that this will change even eh, within this next year, but this was kind of a stepping stone to get to where we potentially want to be or make some more modifications if needed. Correct, Anna? We, it was more of a stepping stone. A lot, we did allow it at tobacco shops, or we allow it currently, now we'd allow it for on and off sale and just kind of having that stepping stone of getting to where we need to be.
Makes sense.
In addition, the um, licensing portion of it through the state, they require, right now they require the THC beverages to be tied with an on-sale or off-sale license. And so tobacco shops are, until they rectify that in the future, um, limited unless they were to go apply for a full on-sale, off-sale license.
Just to make sure I heard you correctly, um, state law tobacco shop by state law, isn't able to sell a liquid form?
Correct.
Or a beverage?
Yep. Eh, unless they would
Unless they have a liquor
Right.
Okay.
Set, yep.
Thank you.
And I did just want to point out one more thing that we and it's probably something that we need to look back in the future, or look back to in the future is we didn't license any cannabinoid. Um, retailers currently meaning tobacco shops, just because of those setback requirements, so I think we do need to be cognizant of maybe in the future, looking at making those modifications, but I think one step at a time with the on-off sale. Um, is beneficial and also the licensing of the city not handling it, just because it and we had licensed it and the state would license it, and maybe the requirements would be different on those licensing.
Clarification. So the tobacco stores that we have now in, currently in town cannot sell edibles because of the location restrictions, correct? Is that what you're saying?
I, that I guess is just my assumption. We haven't had any applications even come forward, so. I have had questions about the setbacks, um, but no one's actually looked to apply for that license right, right now.
So we haven't had an application and thus we haven't issued a permit?
Correct.
Any other questions? Uh, seeing none, I look for a motion so we can get into discussion. Or have a direction to go for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Question, clarification, when will this be legal? At what date will this then be?
When will this take effect? Yes, tonight. So um, with the approval from council tonight, they would be able to then apply online through the Department of Health to initiate that process.
And Tam, just to add to that, um, we were already sending, sending out license renewals, and so we did let them know about the hearing tonight, the potential change in the ordinance, and that if it is approved tonight, like here's the steps of what they would need to do, because we we normally send them out in the beginning of September, so we just kind of got ahead of it. So people should be, once they see um, what happened tonight, they should be prepared to apply right away.
Okay.
A, a couple of things on, on my mind, I uh, I, I think would uh, not be shocked. I, I haven't been a supporter of this. Uh, I understand it's where our world's going. Um, and so for me, it's how do we get it right? Uh, the best we can. We took our first stab at it, as we talked about, and recently learned that um, our off-sale stores were negatively impacted by this. Uh, that it could only be, only be sold a tobacco shop, and so it unfairly put pressure on, on others. I think some of us have heard from those establishments. And it's like, hey, that doesn't seem fair. We shouldn't be impact, in my opinion, we shouldn't be impacting it like that. Which is, I'm comfortable making this revision. But the way it's worded here feels like we're putting undue hardship then back on the tobacco stores now with how they're restricted. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to um, level those playing fields, if you will. If, if I can go at normal hours to get it at one liquor store, but then I may not be able to get it across the street from that same liquor store in a different form, to me, that just doesn't seem logical. I don't know. Any thoughts on on that, or does that make sense?
I think if you looked at it as a, as a degree of drug, I mean, five milligrams is five milligrams consumed, either chew it or swallow it. It's virtually the same drug, so how that delivery method is, does it really change things? You know, if you're legally managing five milligrams per serving or whatever the law, the state law is. You mean, the delivery method is just the messenger at this point, but.
Right, that's why, I mean, we have, literally have a situation where on one side of the street, you can legally sell it in this form and on the other side of the street because there's a um, a gathering of, of youth in a business, but only across the street, you can't sell it there. And so, again, in favor or not in favor of, of, you know, cannabinoid even being sold, just I'm looking purely at the, how are we impacting the, the three different segments in my mind, right? On-sale, off-sale and tobacco. Are we creating a level playing field amongst all three of them?
If, if I could, Anna, and just jump in on this, the, are you specifically talking about Second Street?
Yeah.
Okay, so I believe that that licensed tobacco um, shop, their tobacco license, correct me if I'm wrong, shouldn't have been issued.
Yeah, they, you might recall that they, um, so they they are issued through the end of their lease, so they won't be there long-term beyond that. But I I, if I remember correctly from our conversations, part of the, part of the issue was that the state only allows the beverages at one entity. So essentially, think of it as you made it exclusive, exclusive beverages here, exclusive.
Well, the state won't allow beverages at a tobacco shop, but is there any state law that doesn't allow a edible at a liquor store?
No.
No, but our ordinances do not. And so essentially, you've given the on-sale, off-sale has the beverage side of it, and then the consumables are at the shop side of it exclusively.
Yeah. So specific to the cannabinoid ordinance, trying to not make it multi-page and easy for people to understand, I guess my mind goes to, could we pull out the retail establishment cannot be located, that whole line? Pull that out. But then also, so that would level playing field on a tobacco shop side. But then on a off-sale side, could we then allow edibles to be sold there? To council member L N S's point, five milligrams of THC is five milligrams of THC, whether you drink it or eat it. Again, trying to simplify it, I think within our to, I don't know this for sure, I would lean on staff on this, but in our tobacco ordinance, we already have other restrictions as far as location, right? So not trying to duplicate, trying to simplify.
Doesn't the tobacco ordinance have the same restriction?
Yes, the tobacco ordinance actually has the same one thousand, two thousand foot, so that's where that came from, because essentially it's mirroring that. Um, but if that's the direction council wants to go by allowing beverages and non-beverages at on and off sale, that you can do that legally. Beverages and non beverages at on and off sale, that you can do that legally.
I mean, we. My recollection of our coun-, this council's like first step into this was, holy crap. Cannabinoids coming cuz the state allowed it, where in the heck do we put this? Where do we allow it somewhere? And it seemed like we had comfort in a tobacco shop because. You could only be eighteen to enter and it was somewhat regulated and it was like, that was our first stepping stone of. Where can we find comfort? I think Minnesota has dramatically, in our region, has dramatically changed and accepted the cannabinoid products. To the point where it's like. I, I mean, do we even wanna call out tobacco shops in an or, in a cannabinoid ordinance? Separately, I.
Well, the, the, the time is coming where the store will not be a tobacco stop or will not. Have tobacco, it'll be all cannabis, I mean, that's, that's, a lot of businesses are opening up as just. Cannabon- benoi, he's confused, uh stores without tobacco, I mean. That's happening in St. Cloud and Way Park everywhere around us. It's just a matter of how far do you wanna get into the weeds on defining the delivery of the same amount?
You could, you, it would just. It would have to be in coincidence with their liquor license essentially, um for whether it's a beverage or a edible gummy or whatever that is. They could. If you're, so onsite consumption obviously would have to be with an on sale liquor license, but other than that, you could do it. We would just be dictating where those products could be sold, whether it's a beverage or not. Um, hopefully at one point, we can get to a place with the state to be able to lean everything back onto the state, but. I don't think ultimately we're there yet, so I think that's why we're kind of at this stepping. Stone of where, where we're at tonight, so we, we can make those modifications, however. Removing the thousand foot from a youth facility or the two thousand from a different. Business selling the same products would, yes, we'd eliminate it, but it's in our tobacco.
Right.
Ordinance, so.
And I, I totally see what you're saying, it's just the way this legislation has come down, it's been clunky and we knew. We are gonna have to make revisions to this as different products gain popularity and there's demand at different establishments and we're trying to. Just calibrate that as a community, so I don't disagree with you, but maybe this is. The version we're at and then version three is gonna be.
Version four is gonna be garden chaps.
Yeah, I feel like this is a pretty convoluted subject over the last few years, right, it's really moved fast without any direction and I feel like. Obviously, being new to councils, something that I was hoping that wouldn't go so fast, it's not something I.
New to all of us, so.
Yeah, great supporter of, but I understand it, it's, it's being approved everywhere and we need to be responsible in how it, it's delivered and no matter what. Happens beyond your own belief system with that, um with this product, but. This conversation really came from what you guys did last year and then we got into the beverages, right, and that's where. The, this really was derived from tonight and I think you bring up a good point of further discussion and, and where we go from here, but. For me, um removing those setbacks on the tobacco and, and keeping them separate for now really keeps it. Again, just another nice stepping stone to really figure out, how do we do this responsibly and hope, hopefully there's more. Feedback from the state as they continue to develop um and build out this licensing's, licensing area. Uh, I think the, uh again, the comfort I had in our workshop around the beverages was because we were working with people who've done this for years. Uh, with alcoholic beverages, uh and understanding that on and off sale, uh there's not that big a difference there and it sounds like maybe. The other was same, same was true with tobacco shops and how you allowed that originally. I was saying, hey, they have familiarity with these pri-, products, they have uh certain rules in place that will protect who can go into these facilities and where they're located and so. I, I would not want to change it um tonight and just continue to work through the process.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I think um as Mayor Stayed, there's, the, those steps seem logical, um but kinda like we took a step from. What we created last year to this year, um is I, with the unknown, I don't wanna go too far and have un. Recognized consequences of that, but I think for the discussion, we could get to that point, but um I agree that um I'm okay with this being the first step.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, would look for, uh actually, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That carries. Third and final public hearing is on our fee schedule amendments.
Good evening, mayor members of council. Time will be, be presenting the proposed fee language and changes for the twenty twenty-four rental dwelling fee schedule. This uh fee schedule typically falls in with the rest of the fee schedule adoption, the reason we're doing this outside of there is typically the. Notifications are sent out in September and all fees are collected and everything by the first of the year, so by waiting um another month. Um, we'd, we'd miss that and those fees would be pushed off another year. So this uh previous action on this, this already went to the Public Safety Committee, we reviewed some multifamily dwellings, uh crime free. Non-crime free, discussed that, this came to the September eleventh workshop where all council discussed it. And it's simply changing wording from up to two units to first unit. Uh, leaving one hundred dollar fee the same. Changing each additional unit to, to uh above two to each additional unit for both crime free and non-crime free. Um, increasing crime free thirty-five dollars to unit, or two thirty-five dollars a unit from twenty-five. Increasing non-crime free from eighty, or two eighty-five dollars per unit from fifty-five. And also increasing additional inspections after one reinspection, fee to match a building reinspection, um that's currently. Would go to one fifty to match buildings, so. So what we're looking for council action is a, open a public hearing on proposed twenty twenty-four rental inspection fee to, and receive public comment. Um, and as well as a motion to adopt the ordinance and summary ordinance, adopting twenty-four, twenty twenty-four rental inspection fee rates. And then uh be available for any questions.
Counsel, any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the fee schedule amendments, please step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to testify on the fee schedule? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify? Close the public hearing? Counsel, any questions? For chief?
Chief, can you just uh briefly comment like you did during the workshop about? Why we promote this and being the crime free and how it um helps the citizen as well as our emergency services?
Yeah, so our crime free program is it, it basically done in conjunction with police and fire. So all we'll do is we'll give them an option to go through and there's a three phased approach um for the um, the landlord to become crime free. Um, so they, basically their management team has to do some classes, go through that to get the proper training and that is uh everything from. Rental application, housing discrimination, screening, background checks, lease addendums, unlawful detainer, management policies. Um, just in phase one, phase two typically is done, it's a crime prevention requirement by owners where they'll do. Single cylinder deadbolts, uh they'll have strike plates put in, um several different security lighting, a lot of different measures like that where. Actually, the CSO would actually go look at that and then phase three is actually uh. Include the lease addendum, so the lease addendum um that is involved for that also goes beyond just the. Person signing up, that goes to any residents or occupants that live inside there, it gives us, so even during twenty, uh during covid. If there was a problematic person with maybe a felony or something, that was the one way they could still get evicted, um but this basically, the whole program really uh. It really for, along with that, you know, we could do in, it used to be an annual inspection because of uh. You know, obviously rapid growth in the city, um those inspections have gotten, gotten further out. And that's one of the things we're trying to do is shorten that timeline, get them back closer to a year so that. Our inspectors can get in these buildings, work with management and to make sure that the, the buildings are being maintained properly and that the uh. The uh residents have all their fire protection systems, all those things in place, so. Um, it's really overall this, the whole program, uh the goal uh with talking with public safety and with the police chief and. Is to really put some emphasis on their, um you know, council a while back, put a moratorium on building apartments so we could get a handle on it. Um, I think this is the follow up to it to really ensure that our city stays safe, that we continue to keep our uh properties looking nice and maintained.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion. We have a motion to approve the ordinance amendments? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That carries, thanks chief. Onto new business. Chief Silyard, the floor is yours.
I have some special guests that might wanna come in and join us. Just in case you were wavering on your vote. Uh, so this therapy uh canine is becoming a part of our newly formed canine unit. Was a little bit last minute when we learned about the opportunity uh to partner with Soldier Six, who also partnered with us on the recent squad car project that. You probably all noticed last week and um. We had the opportunity to. Get a therapy canine from Soldier Six as well as training uh for free to us, so this was obviously an easier financial decision, but. More importantly, uh a little bit new to law enforcement is adding therapy canine units, there are some in the metro area will be. The first in law enforcement in the central Minnesota area and maybe even greater Minnesota. But the ability to have that canine connect with our staff uh and the public is. I don't even need to talk about it that much, everyone loves dogs, they don't always love cops, but they always love dogs and. We're super excited uh to have her in the ranks and to partner with Soldier Six and then continuing. Her training, uh which will help us involve uh down in the metro area who have already done this, I think Brooklyn Center, did I get that right? Both their fire department and police department have a canine, uh a therapy canine and. When you think about connecting with victims of crime and traumat-, trauma and the different things that our citizens have to see throughout their lives and. Our officers have to see, it's just a great way uh to try to relieve some of that stress and bring those walls down a little bit, so. Before, I'm gonna hand the floor over to Mike from Soldier Six to just talk about Kimber and the program a little bit, before I do that, I'd uh be remiss if I didn't. Uh, give a public shout out to Captain Mater uh for all, all of his efforts with the canine program. Uh, I can't speak highly enough of the job he's doing and being able to watch for this opportunity and getting ready for a patrol canine. Uh, coming up in the spring, so.
As I'm watching the three audience members, not one has stopped smiling since the dog walked in, so.
They're smiling because I'm here. Hi, everybody, I'm Mike Bamer from Soldier Six, uh so Soldier Six is a nonprofit organization, we give service dogs to our military veterans, our first responders. Um, and, and those departments that are, that are uh wanting to have a department dog, a therapy dog for their agency to help out, not only for the agency. You know, for the, for the members of the department and, and also the city, but also just kinda build that gap in the community and, and uh, and. Kinda build a new bridge to where maybe a bridge wasn't there before and a dog is an easy way to do that. So Kimber here, she's very special, uh Kimber went to doggy jail about uh, about a little over uh two months ago and then we got a phone call. Saying that Kimber was in doggy jail and she needed help, so we posted her bail and we got her out.
Good girl.
Uh, but she is a, she's about four month old Belgian Malinois. And anybody that has any idea about Belgian Malinois, they're crazy, they're, and they're insane, they'll climb on your wall, get on your ceiling and. Do batfoot, backflips all the way back down, Kimber won't, I promise you. She's very calm, she's, she's super sensitive, she's super sweet, uh she just loves her people and she loves her person and, and that's who she wants to be with and she wants to enjoy life and. And she's a great dog to, to integrate with other people and other animals, uh we have Leo over there who's one of our veteran uh service dogs, Chris is his. His uh handler and uh, uh they're here to, to help us out and, and say goodbye to, to Kimber, but um. Training that we're, that we're gonna offer the, the city of Sartell is, is something that's our gift to you, uh we wanna do it, we wanna help out, we wanna be there for. For the department and, and members of the department and also your city, um and the uh, the training is, it's quite, uh, it's quite rigorous. It's, it's not. Uh, but it, it's fun though, we're, we're gonna hammer home real strict obedience and we want Kimber to understand. What the boundaries are with everything and we wanna make sure that the foundation is there before we introduce her to a public setting and, and bring her out and, and let her do her. Her magic, you know, assort with, with the public, um but uh the whole ultimate goal is to have an extremely obedient dog. Who's gonna be there with the handler at, at events and be able to, to get everybody together and, and build that, like I said, that community gap and. And, and the bridge and, and then also too to serve uh the officers and the, and also the fire department when there's a traumatic incident that happens. Have the dog be present for, for a therapy session or debrief session, um that's what a lot of our, our uh. Department dogs do is they're there for, for a debrief and, and they can work that room and they can understand, you know, who's having a bad time, who's suffering, who, who needs help. And for a dog uh to come up and, and interject themselves in, in somebody's face and say, hey, I'm here, you can pet me, i- it's okay, I'm, I'm here, I love you. Uh, that's something special and that gets that person to open up and kinda understand, hey, it's okay to have these bad feelings and it's okay to talk about them, so that, that's kinda one of these things. Uh, a stigma that's dying in law enforcement and, and on the, on the fire side as well of. Being stressed out and having a, a traumatic incident, you wanna be able to talk about it. Um, you know, I, I come from seventeen years as a, as a cop and, and it was seventeen years ago, you don't talk about your feelings. Now, today, you better talk about them because that's what's gonna make you stay in the, in the profession and, and keep going with the fight and, and really serve your community and be able to. To get back in there and, and have fun, so my hat is off to you chief for, for being able to, to make it happen and. Captain Mater, same thing, I mean, you guys did an amazing job and you have an amazing department, I mean, I've been floored by how great this department is. And I'm not just saying it cuz these two gentlemen are in here, but uh it, it truly is one of those. Police departments that I look at and go, I'd, if I was still wanting to be in cop work, I'd, I'd come here in a, in a heartbeat, I don't. But Kimber, uh, super sweet, she's ready, she's ready to go, um and she's, she's, she's ready for this, so. We're uh, we're gonna take two weeks off, she's gonna integrate with your department and then we're gonna start training and uh do training all. Here in the city to kinda get her in tune with everybody in here and understand that this is work, Chris, excuse me, this is work, this is her life, this is where, where everything is gonna. Apparently, I don't like your microphone, this is where everything's gonna work in here, so. But thank you folks for this opportunity for uh, for us to, to be a part of this and, and come in and join your family.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, lastly, before a motion on the table, I, I didn't know it in here, but uh we did go through a selection process and. Had several people interested and selected Officer Kerry Bonfield to be Kimber's handler.
Counsel, any questions?
Carrie, is it true that you have a Facebook page, Instagram and already set up for your puppy?
Not Facebook, but she has an Instagram and she will have a TikTok.
Well, you should get her on Facebook right now, live and introduce her to the crowds that are watching, kinda she was peeking around the edge, I was seeing if they, people could see her, but. Excellent, very exciting.
By crowds, he means two people. Uh, counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve the donation or accept the donation from Soldier Six.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, uh, any other discussion? Thanks again, um awesome what you guys are, are helping us with and uh look forward to seeing Kimber out in the community. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next up is Flock Safety Cameras.
All right, I am gonna have Rob pull up a. Couple video links, so I'll just uh quickly brief, uh so Public Safety Committee and I have met on this uh a couple different times. Uh, had a presentation with Flock Safety Cameras and all the video kinda speaks, they're pretty short and they speak a little bit to what these are, but these are license plate reader cameras. That we're looking to install around the community, uh we had two different quotes come in and one was for seven cameras. Excuse me, eight cameras and a mobile camera. Uh, included in that and then one, another one was ten cameras uh with the addition of the mobile camera. We decided this one was closer to our budget, so we did go with the lower one, uh in doing that, we lose two interior cameras. Uh, within the city that were meant to try to capture vehicle plates of possible criminals moving in our city and not. Leaving the confines of our city. But there is an opportunity to, uh, partner with HOAs and private businesses with these cameras. So our, our hope is to get them launched and cover our interior, or excuse me, our exit, uh, ingress, egress routes into the city. And then look to partner, for those partnerships and see where those hit. And ultimately, if we wanted to add cameras in the future, it's pretty easy to do to our network. Uh, these cameras will be owned by Flock, we don't own them, we're just paying for the service. So, uh, we don't have to worry about going out to climb a pole to maintain a camera, that's all kind of part of the deal with them. So I'll, uh, have Rob play the first video and. This first one's just a news story.
Within the last two years, we've kind of been inundated with auto thefts.
Flock cameras are designed to identify license plates associated with crimes. The cameras are set up at the entrance to communities and are solar powered. The Bay Village Police Department will spend roughly twenty-five thousand dollars this year.
The cost is outweighed by the benefits of the community.
Between Bay Village, Avon, Westlake and Lakewood, there are seventy-three cameras. Sergeant Edward Chapman and the Bay Village Police Department will now be alerted immediately of a hit.
Obviously, any, any missing child, any missing person, that's something we're going to give priority to. Warrants, we're going to, we'll do our best to, to ensure that accurate information's there and if we can find the car safely. So the lag time's about five to fifteen seconds.
Police can look for specific indicators as well, whether that be a gang member or suspected terrorist, someone with warrants or even amber alerts.
It, it won't give us any information unless there's some indicator there. So I know that that's, that's one of the questions that a lot of people have is, well, it's just taking pictures of everything that's coming through. And all's we're getting is information that is tied to specific alerts or certain indicators that we would be concerned about.
The system also allows police departments to use the cameras for investigative purposes.
If there are people that we may be looking for, um, vehicles that we may be looking for, we're able to create kind of our own hot list. But it has to be for some type of investigative purpose.
The flock cameras are also set up in Mener, Solon, East Cleveland and Brunswick, just to name a few here in northeast Ohio. The Bay Village Police Department tells me that six of their eight are actively running right now with the one behind me, but they haven't had to use it to locate anyone just yet. Laura?
All right, Neil, live for us tonight, we appreciate it, thank you.
The second video I have them play is actually made by Woodbury PD, so it's a little more local. We would be, uh, if we do install these, we'd be the only city outside the metro area that has them. Uh, when I left St. Louis County, they were in the process of installing them there as well. Uh, but this is a P, the, a video that Woodbury PD kind of made to disseminate to their citizens too, to just talk a little bit about it.
And detect and deter crime. The Woodbury Police Department is implementing a technology that will allow us to be more effective in this effort. We've installed Flock Automatic License Plate Reader Cameras, also known as ALPR cameras. The flock cameras will be located around our retail areas. These cameras are designed to notify us when a stolen vehicle passes by them, someone with felony warrants, amber alerts, silver alerts. And cops alerts with, which stands for keeping our people safe. It's the equivalent of a be on the lookout alert for law enforcement. So they won't be detecting speeders, any type of traffic violations, expired registrations or anything of that nature. The flock cameras will only be capturing the rear of the vehicle and the license plate. And the technology allows it to identify the make and model of the vehicles that are captured. They won't be capturing any personal identifying information, they won't be capturing pictures of the drivers or any other information. The data captured by these cameras is retained for thirty days. The Woodbury Police Department has actually been in a trial phase with flock cameras for the last sixty days. The trial has been amazing, uh, it's been a huge success. We have recovered dozens of stolen vehicles, recovered firearms in possession of felons, arrested people on, uh, serious warrants and other offenses. Flock is also a powerful investigative tool after a fact. For instance, if you have a major crime in your city and you have a pretty good idea that the suspect vehicle that you're looking for passed by one of the cameras. Uh, if you have search criteria, you can search for that particular vehicle during that particular timeframe. And you can develop suspects that otherwise we would have no ability to do so. One of our success stories, when we first started the trial, is we received a stolen vehicle hit. Vehicle was stolen and the suspect that was identified in the alert was also wanted for a felony domestic. Officers responded to the area, they located the vehicle, they worked with their retail partner to identify who had gotten out of that vehicle. And they were able to make a safe apprehension, recover the vehicle and have that person arrested and accountable for his charges. These cameras allow our officers to be more effective while being safer at the same time.
So just a little bit more about, uh, how we would utilize these cameras. This is a map, uh, from Flock and if you had, I could send you the link if you had more questions on it. But if you, uh, Rob, if you click on the individual cameras too, it'll kind of say something about the location, show the picture of the overhead. So, um, this is where we would look at placing the cameras and we spent some time with our investigators trying to find the best spots to capture, uh, vehicles moving in and out of. We did avoid one intersection at Riverside in County Road one twenty mostly because it's going to get torn up next year and we didn't want to have to pay to replace that pole. So we may look to add that one in the future, but I think we're going to be able to back it off closer to Highway fifteen, uh, and still capture that intersection pretty well. But essentially officers would log into their system and their MDC, uh, when they sign on for the shift, we could have our front end staff logged into the system as well. And anytime there was a hit on a, a hot list of any kind, whether, and we set that up where we want to monitor for stolen vehicles, silver alerts, amber alerts. Uh, felony warrants, different, whatever hot list we want to create, maybe there's a suspect vehicle we're looking to watch for. We can enter that plate in there and get an immediate notification if it enters our, our city. So there's that proactive piece of it and then the investigative piece is really important. When I think about like the vehicle thefts we've had in the town, uh, over the last few months in the summer, we've had a lot of vehicle descriptions with no license plate. Uh, so if we know it's a green Jeep Cherokee, I can type in green Jeep, because of the AI involved in this, it'll find every green Jeep Cherokee that's been pictured. And we can grab a plate off of that. It's not taking photos of the driver, we don't get photos of the person driving the vehicle, which is partially intentional, we're trying to protect privacy as we do this. Uh, and this is the only company, Minnesota's a little behind the eight ball on this, these are nationwide, they're everywhere. Uh, but Minnesota has some very strict data privacy laws and retention laws. So the data is only good for thirty days unless we turn it into evidence and then we can retain it longer. Um, so there's a, a lot of protections in place for our citizens as well, but the value of these is pretty huge. And I think about in the city, uh, pairing with HOAs who have cul-de-sacs or dead end roads can literally capture every vehicle that gets into that neighborhood. Uh, and then talking through this and some of the value in it too, I spent some time in the Wilds neighborhood in particular, I got lost, by the way, I did have to GPS my way out of it. But as I drove around and, and I appreciate living in a city where our citizens feel really safe, I saw a lot of juvenile kids running around. Uh, and I just thought to myself, how many of these kids could I abduct? And that doesn't, that's not me being a weirdo, that's me being proactive and thinking a little bit scary that there's, maybe I want our ci, our citizens to maybe just have a little bit heightened awareness about the fact that. Uh, there is risk involved in letting your, your children be able to play, but you want them to, so there's that, how do you create awareness? And, uh, being a little more vigilant without making people too fearful or hitting the alarm button and, and loving living in a city that allows our kids to do that. And this is certainly an insurance piece to that, uh, when you talk about, uh, most citizens don't see a license plate like a cop does in their brain. Or maybe the vehicle's too far away, but a lot of them can give you a vehicle description and being able to capture some of that and add some safeguards to our community, I think would be a really nice move, so. I'll stand for questions.
Counsel, questions on the flock safety camera proposal?
So you have an internal policy of access and how it will be used, will you have a internal policy that will, is it limited access, is it any police officer? Who can create a query, just kind of walk us through kind of your thoughts on that?
The, uh, so we can basically do whatever we want with the program. And with approval of this, there are obviously some time here for install that we'll use that time to navigate those policies and, uh, for sure engage the public safety committee or all of you. But every officer would have access to get alerts, we would want that so that they're able to get that alerts. When it comes to querying the data, it is tracked, so anybody that would query a certain license plate or vehicle make has to put in a reason of why they're making the query. And we'll tie that likely to case numbers as well. Um, we haven't talked a lot internally of who we're going to allow to make those queries. Partly because I, I'd love to say it would only be like supervisors, investigators, but we don't always have a supervisor or investigator on. And if our officer gets a vehicle description late at night and they're able to quickly find a plate to that and maybe solve a crime before it even gets to be Monday morning. We don't necessarily want to limit that capability either, so the likelihood would be that we would allow access to every officer. Uh, but make sure we keep the safeguards in place that they have to have a criminal justice reason to search that and they've got to type in the reason that they're searching it. And then their login, so anytime they log into the system, we're able to track that as well.
Chief, I assume the data resides on Flock's side, we're not housing anything here?
Correct, we don't retain any data, uh, and it's a thirty day retention policy unless we pull it, uh, for evidence. When we pull it for evidence, then we'd house it locally, but that'd be it.
Any other questions? I think as it was presented to the public safety committee, um, as a, a technology tool, uh, for our department. And, um, you know, when we step back and look at a, we're a twenty thousand person community now. Yet it feels at times like we're five to six thousand people and that's a really good thing. It's how do we recognize that a stolen vehicle is, you know, on the map that was highlighted, a stolen vehicle is entering our community? How do we, through technology, notify our law enforcement that are out on the road patrolling right then and there? Uh, versus waiting for potentially a crime to be committed with that stolen vehicle? I, I think it, it's just the way of, of, uh, future policing and leveraging technology, so. I am, uh, very appreciative of it, I also am very appreciative of the limited scope that it has, doesn't have a radar detector, doesn't see who's in the vehicle. It is simply capturing the license plate and make model. Would, uh, look for a motion to approve the camera purchases?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion and a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That carries. Department reports. Administration.
Mayor members of the council, you have my report, uh, open and available for any questions.
Any questions for admin? Thank you. Uh, finance?
Yes, good evening, you have my report as well, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for finance? Seeing none, thank you. And community development?
Mayor, members of the council, you have my monthly report, I'd be happy, questions that you may have.
Any questions for community development? Seeing none, thank you. Uh, city commission updates?
Um, nothing to add about any of our current commissions, um, just that we are still recruiting for one position on the Human Rights Commission, which is a St. Claude Regional Human Rights Commission. Um, that recruitment will go until the end of the month unless we don't have any applications, in which case we would extend it. So any interested parties, uh, can apply on our website.
Spin that differently, there's only one spot left.
There's only one spot, hurry.
Yes.
Join quickly.
Thank you. Uh, city council committee updates, Tim?
I'm super excited for Kimber to get out on the street. I think she'll be a great asset and thanks for the tour today, whoever set that up, the logistics was great, so appreciate it.
Nothing tonight.
Alex? Judd?
I would just echo Tim's statement, so thanks for the tour this evening and thanks for the continued progressiveness of looking for better ways for us to continue to innovate and, and lead. Uh, really other communities on, on things like these cameras and other things, so good job.
Awesome, a couple items I have, uh, one is the Great River Children's Museum is having a big event, uh, building block party, Saturday, October seventh. Look at their website, Facebook for more. And then, uh, Maggie spoke earlier on the Senior Connection and Historic Society, a lot of the fun things going there. Um, sixth grade at the community center this week, I was fortunate to attend last year, uh, learned a lot. There's some great information that they're teaching our sixth graders about the history of our community that. Um, a thirty-eight year old like myself hadn't even known, so, uh, if anyone gets a chance, stop in there, it, it truly is pretty cool.
Do you have the date of that, it wasn't?
Does anyone know, like, there's a couple dates?
I thought it was Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday. Uh, and there's, uh, last year, I think there was, um, four different sections. Uh, we, we were at the paper mill today and, um, they have some old tools from when the logs came down, uh, how they'd handle the logs, so really cool. And then the other one I'd call out is the community wide bingo. Um, I heard her say that bingo cards are available at City Hall. Community Center maybe?
Yep.
Community Center and then Naughty Paws on the east side. So sounds like an awesome event, encourage everyone to get out and do that as well. I don't have anything further, look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye, we're adjourned.